Calling to order the Monday, October 17th, 2022, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Vilani?
Here.
Mayor Terbrack?
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Gavin. Are there any changes? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Let us pray. Good and loving God, we gather in this space with different backgrounds, opinions, and perspectives, yet with a shared desire to see this little city of Berkeley live up to its fullest potential. Empower us to see the humanity of our human institutions and all of their brokenness and all of their beauty. More importantly, as we move into this election cycle more fully, empower us to see the humanity in one another. To vote, in the words of John Wesley, without fee or reward for the person we judge most worthy for each office. To speak no evil of the person we vote against. And to take care that our spirits are not sharpened against those who voted on the other side. Empower us, ever-creating and compassionate God, to see even those we disagree with as you see each of us, as people worthy of respect, grace, and love. Guide our city council tonight as they make decisions about the future of Berkeley. Comfort the hurting. Heal the broken. Hear the cries of the oppressed and guide us forward. This city is made up of people of many different backgrounds: Christians, Jews, and Muslims, Hindus, and Buddhists, atheists, and agnostics. But it is in the strong name of Jesus and in the power of the Holy Spirit that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Next up on this evening's agenda is public comments. These are public comments again for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. Remember, council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a Department of the City or a member of City staff, please sign your name at the clerk's desk. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. You will have three minutes to speak, and once your three minutes are up, I'll ask you to please sit down. Okay. I'll give you two and a half minutes.
Good evening to the honorable body. Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. I'll let our DDA liaison on the city council give a lot of the specifics of the upcoming events, but I just want to take this lull to say thank you to our liaison and our volunteers who help power the Downtown Development Authority, specifically Lisa Kempner, since she happened to come tonight. I just want to say thank you to Lisa for the many hours invested in making our downtown shine through the glistening of plastic bones. And I just want to say that the hundreds of community members that have made a difference, I just want to say thank you and use this opportunity. And if you're not in downtown Berkeley on October 29th, you are not doing October right. I'll leave you to that.
Thank you, Mike. Seeing nobody else thinking about jumping up to the microphone, we will close public comments and move on to this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read those items?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, October 3rd, 2022. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1379. Three, motion number M9622. Matter of casting Berkeley's official vote for the election of the Board of Directors for the MML Liability and Property Pool, directing the city clerk to send in the marked ballot. Four, motion number M9722. Matter of authorizing the mayor to sign the renewal of the Animal Shelter Services and Disposal Interlocal Agreement between Oakland County and the City of Berkeley for fiscal years 2023 through 2025. Five, proclamation P3422. Matter proclaiming November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month. Six, proclamation P3522. Matter proclaiming Movember 2022 as Men's Health Awareness Month.
Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved. Support. However you want to do it.
Okay, now we're changing it. Motion made by Councilmember Price, support from Mayor Protam Dean. Are there any changes? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on our consent agenda?
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to this evening's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, please.
Motion number M9822. Matter of approving marijuana business license, PMA 20-0007, for Yellow Tail Ventures LLC, Number 1, DBA Moses Roses Provisioning Center, to be located at 3120 11 Mile Road.
Is there a motion to approve M9822?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Mayor Protam Dean. Mr. Baumgard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You have with you this evening representatives of the applicant Yellow Tail, which is doing business as Moses Roses. They come to you by way of the normal routine that we set up for our marijuana business license. They've been through the application process. They've been through the appeals process. They received a score of 301, tying them with three other entities, so they tie for that third spot out of the five that were allowed here. So they are the fifth and final one to come before you, fifth and final of those that were allowed to proceed to the site plan process. They did so. They paid before city council, most recently on October the 11th, and received an approval with conditions during a special meeting of the Planning Commission. So as with the other ones, they come before you this evening seeking a business license approval for marijuana, as is the requirement of the state, as well as the city's own marijuana ordinances.
Okay. It appears we have the applicant and team here.
Thank you, and good evening, Your Honor. Before the meeting, I was having a brief conversation with Your Honor, and I indicated that in Niagara-on-the-Lake, Ontario, they refer to their mayor as Lord Mayor. So be it. Before you this evening, you have the application of Moses Roses. And we offer the city an opportunity to take a building that was constructed in 1965, that has the infrastructure from 1965. And unfortunately, there's some serious problems with this particular structure. There is a power pole that is actually physically enclosed inside of this building. So we're going to take this old, tired property, which has lived a long and fruitful life, and we're going to revitalize it. We're going to offer you an infrastructure that includes pervious pavers. And as everyone knows, you have a large amount of clay in your soil here in Berkeley. So what happens when it rains? It pools and it ponds. Our solution? Remove it. We're going to excavate four and a half feet of clay, which not only helps our facility, but also helps the neighboring facility, because their water is going to naturally want to drain through our system. And so we will have four and a half feet of gravel that ends into a 100-year tank. And that 100-year tank will then disperse the water safely and efficiently into the system, rather than flooding our streets, flooding our sidewalks, and making an absolute mess of the problem. The neighbors all want to be confident that we're not going to park on their property, and we can assure you of that. The ordinance only says we need 12 spots. We have 18 spots on site, and we've also reached agreements with our two neighboring properties to have a shared parking agreement for an additional 14 spots. So that gives us 33 combined spaces. That allows for our staff and our customers to comfortably park, do their business, generate income for our city, and not burden the neighborhood or burden the subdivisions. It's a win-win. And we've passed the evening gown competition, the swimsuit competition, the talent portion of our show, and we stand before you, awaiting your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question from council? Councilmember Price?
Yes, I understand that there were some conditions. Could you share with everyone what some of the conditions are and how you are going to go about meeting them?
Absolutely. So I will put them in three categories. The first category I will call the parapet. Parapet is where you put your HVAC units on the roof. They should not be in the line of sight. And it was never our intention that they be there, but the drawings weren't to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission? Fine. We will, when we go for our pre-construction planning meeting, and I've actually shared them this evening with the Planning Commission chair, I even showed her, because I wanted to show my good faith that, in fact, we take this very seriously. So yes, none of the equipment is in the line of sight. That was issue number one. Issue number two had to do with the driving radius. And the driving radius ranged from 22 feet to 24 feet. Now, the ordinance says it has to be 24, where there is a caveat which allows us to apply for 22, and we just said, you know what? It's not worth it. And so, yes, we agreed to use that 24-foot driving radius. And again, the drawings have been updated to show that. The final condition had to do with the lighting. And we have our poles, and we submitted our photometrics. Now, the photometrics that we showed, showed that on the other side of our property line, it's a zero shed. In other words, we do not have our lights spilling onto the neighbors, the street, someone's backyard. It focuses downward and inward. One of the review reports indicated that the pole light was too strong, that it should not have so many candles. That's their measurement of the light. And so we said, fine. If you think that it's too bright, we can tinker with the numbers, with the height, with the wattage, with, you know, the yield, and make it so it's within your suggestions. And so again, fine. A lot of the comments that came from the city's public works were more in the line of planning stage comments. I'll give you the perfect example. We don't know what the water main looks like. Is it a one-feet? Is it a two-feet? So we took the general status and said, okay, we're only going to need to close one lane of traffic. That's all we should have to. If we do have to close both lanes, then we have to actually get Oak Park involved, which is the neighboring property, to the other side of the street. And again, we can put that together. But again, that's so, you know, not, I shouldn't say so far, that is just the next step down the road, if you will, and not something that we know the answer to at this very second. Those are the major questions that the Planning Commission had for us. And again, I could have argued with them, and I'll give you an example. There's clay in the ground. I know that there's clay in the ground. Our two digs, our two bores told us there's clay in the ground. They said they wanted additional borings. My first thinking was, all it's going to do is confirm that which I already know. Yes, there's clay in the ground. But if you want additional borings, I'm not here to fight with you. Regarding the lighting, for example, the lighting, and others, we are in a unique scenario. And what makes us unique is not many retail establishments have to have record, you know, cameras that record and cameras that can keep footage for 30, 45, 60 days at a time. We do. State of Michigan, under the CRA, which is the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, says we have to have a quality, readable, legible image that we maintain for a minimum of 30 days. We're going to hold them for longer than that. We're holding them for 45. But the point being is, when I read the comments saying that my light is too strong, my first knee-jerk reaction was, how is that going to impact the quality of the image that I'm going to get on my camera? Am I going to be able to satisfy CRA with, if that's what they make me do? If they make me darken the light, am I still going to get that quality image? And again, the resolution or the answer I came up with is, that's all part of the tinkering process, if you will. Making them happy, making the CRA happy. And again, it just simply wasn't worth digging into the sand and having the fight. So we agreed.
May I ask a follow-up question on that, please? Thank you, Your Honor. When talking about the lighting, and I hear this, these concerns that you have, wanting to meet the expectations of both our Planning Commission and the CRA, I do notice that the conditions say that the light foot candles need to be reduced, especially specifically along the northern property line. So that's where I'm assuming...
Not to interrupt you or not to correct you, but I believe it was the western. I mean, the eastern.
It says northern.
It says northern in what was given to me. And I guess, just when you're thinking about how to balance those, I think the concern I would have, I'll just speak for myself as a resident, right, is that the lights spilling over would be affecting the residences. So there might be an option to have brighter lights in the areas where you need to have recordings and less bright lights that are abutting the residences.
Totally agree.
Okay.
Again, I'm not disagreeing with one thing that you said. Totally agree. And if it turns out that, first of all, also, the lights are kicked in, so they face inward, never outward.
Sure.
And second of all, again, if it's too bright in that one area, fine. We pitch that one down. We put a light on the building itself.
Sure.
It balances. You're absolutely right. It's not our intention that, you know, we don't want those huge spotlights that you remembered when you were a kid of the auto dealerships.
I'm glad that you have plans to meet all of the conditions that...
Yes, we are currently reviewing different poles, moving the poles, and adjusting those to get rid of that northern light.
And just to be clear for everybody here, if we, what we are voting on is what our esteemed Planning Commission obviously passed with those conditions. The items from DPW, HRC, Carlisle-Wartman certainly will be there and approved by staff. 24-foot aisle width, as you mentioned already, the foot candles, which we just discussed as well, specifically along the northern property line. Sufficient detail of the living wall to ensure the ability, city's ability to enforce maintenance consistent with the approved site plan. And the last one, the proposed landscape being consistent with our master plan. Obviously, all of those things are part of what we're talking about. We are not the Planning Commission, and that is not our role. We have full faith and confidence in our Planning Commission and what they do, so I don't want to get too far down that rabbit hole, because that is not what we're here to discuss.
No.
But I appreciate the answers.
And also, just to add to that, and that is, when we do have our construction meetings, when, you know, there will be a third set of eyes that look everything over, all the drawings, to make sure all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted.
I'm very confident in that as well. Yes. Additional questions for applicants, maybe not so site-planny?
So you brought up parking and that you've reached an agreement with your neighbors. For those who may not be familiar with your location, can you remind everyone who those neighbors are that you've reached an agreement with?
Mr. L?
Sure. On the west side is going to be Acme. They have a rear parking lot, and they don't use it right now. We'll be utilizing that one. On the right side of us is the auto one, and on their off-hours, we will be using their parking lots.
Okay, so it's not anticipated to impact their business hours?
No, no, absolutely not. No, we're aware of it.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember Hunnen?
If this is approved tonight, when do you expect to start construction? When do you expect to open?
We will start construction drawings. We are in the phase of working those now. As soon as we have the construction meetings and tie all that up, we're hoping to be starting in about a month, depending on weather-related right now. We're going to kind of get caught in the pro-zone, so...
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions from anybody else that is with us today?
Thank you for your time.
Well, hold on, don't go anywhere yet, in case somebody has a question. Don't get carried away here. All right. It doesn't look like anybody does now. Thank you for your time as well. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M9822?
Hunnen?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
No.
Terbrack?
Yes. M9822 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M9922. Matter of approving the City of Berkeley and the Department of Public Safety to enter into an interlocal agreement with the County of Oakland to participate in the Oakland County Gun Buyback Pilot Program. This Oakland County-funded event will take place on Saturday, October 22nd, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., in conjunction with the Royal Oak Police Department at the ROPD Station.
Is there a motion to approve M9922? Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgard, I thought the chief was with us. Are you still sitting in the chair over there, huh?
Actually, just how I feel.
Mr. Mayor, this is such a well-written motion, I don't have much to offer here, in addition to say I directed your packet, where the chiefs provided a memo, some of the background information, and a resolution addressed or adopted by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. And as you noticed, both chiefs are here. I'm speaking with you this evening as well.
Start with you, chief.
I concur with Mr. Baumgard, and that memo was really well-written, so I don't have much more to add either. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the chief. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us and to help benefit our community. Two questions. First, in terms of communication and outreach to let people know about it. And then, secondly, what happens to any of the firearms that are brought in and acquired by the city?
We will check them to see if they're stolen. There will also be test-fired by the Oakland County Sheriff's Office to see if they're wanted for any open shootings. And assuming neither of those happens, then they'll be destroyed by the Michigan State Police.
Great, and thank you. And then for the communications and outreach to let people know about this?
It's been, it's been, we're partnering with Royal Oak PD. They have put it on a Facebook post on there, as we've shared that. We're going to go through, the Oakland County Board of Commissioners have also shared it, so I think it's pretty well-known.
Okay, and hopefully some of our Berkeley folks can chime in with communications as well.
Sure.
Yeah, great, thank you.
I'm sure.
Happy with this.
Excellent, thank you. Additional questions for the chief? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, just a real quick question. Obviously, community-dependent, but on average, how, how many firearms would you say are bought back in this, in these type of situations?
You know what? Some have been very successful, some have been not so successful. I would like to point out, it's probably a good time to mention it right now, is you can turn any unwanted firearms into any police department anytime. You don't get a gift card, but if you don't want, if you don't want your firearm, take it to your local police department and turn it in. We'll always take them, we'll go through the same procedure to destroy them, or, in rare cases, we'll convert them also.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, and it's a good question, we're really not sure.
That's okay. I think, I think it's a great program either way, so, thank you.
Any that we get.
Yeah, it's a win.
I had the same question, is Councilmember Gavin?
Okay. Councilmember Price?
For people listening who might be interested in participating, could you share a little bit more about the date, the time, where they go, and the amounts of gift cards?
Sure, it's, we're partnering with Royal Oak Police Department, so I believe, I believe there's a total of four locations in Oakland County. Most of them are two departments at a time, I think the exception is Ferndale, but we'll be at the Royal Oak Police Department on Saturday, October 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The, and we'll be right outside, it's a drive-through procedure. I'm sure we'll publish more, but we're looking for the weapons to be in the trunk, and we'll come right out and get them out of the trunk. For pistols, it's $100. For rifles, it's $200. And for assault weapons, $300.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I think, if I'm not asked, Royal Oak, the money's pretty much been allocated to us to decide what to do with it. We're going to get Meyer gift cards that will be given out in Royal Oak. That way, people can use it for gas, clothes, food, whatever they need.
Excellent, thank you. Additional questions? Well, certainly appreciate, as my colleagues have mentioned, bringing this to us. Very happy to be able to participate in this program pending approval, so I guess we should probably figure out if that's going to happen. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M9922?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes. Thank you, chief. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four this evening?
Resolution number R2222. Matter of designating Saturday, December 3rd, 2022, for the annual holiday parade and tree lighting ceremony in Berkeley. The approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve R2222?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Protam Dean. Mr. Baumgard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As you know, time-honored annual event that's coming back yet again this year. We've reviewed all the application materials, it's been signed off on the, signed off on by the needed departments, and we look forward to another really good year this year. So you actually have two applications in front of you, and one, as the motion states, the Holiday Lights Parade is put on by our parade committee, and then the tree lighting is actually put on by the Berkeley Junior Women's Club. Both partner together to make for a wonderful evening. I'll just note that we're also doing the Santa Drive-by this year as well, so that's kind of a, more of a city thing, so it's noted in here as being on the same day, but that'll be in the Thursday and Friday leading up to the Holiday Lights Parade. So it'll be a fantastic week of cheer and merriment.
Excellent. Can't believe we're already here.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we're not, but... Cinda, welcome back.
Thank you. We would like...
We would like to extend an invitation to our mayor and to our council and anybody else to come out and join us in the parade Saturday, December 3rd. We are planning all kinds of activities throughout the day, and with the help of Mike, we're going to put on a really great day. It's going to be a great day. On a sad note, my horse and carriage lady that I've had for over 20 years passed away. She just passed away last week. And I'm going to have horse and carriages one way or another. But, yeah, we'd like to invite you, and I guess that we're doing the drive-by at nighttime so it can be a light-up, but it'll still be early enough so the kids can go to bed and...
That's good, I appreciate that.
It always does.
Yes, it, it does. Questions for Cinda in the committee?
We have a brand-new tree, too. I bought a brand-new tree because the other one...
I will tell you that sadly, for some, I was not able to attend the parade last year because I happened to be in Indianapolis watching Michigan win a Big Ten championship. But I will tell you that even if, even if they are there again this year, I will not, I will be here in, in Berkeley.
But will your dad be here?
He's not going anywhere. He's not going to be hunting at night, so yeah, he'll, he'll certainly be around, and I will make sure that I let him know that.
And we, of course, are always looking for volunteers.
Certainly.
Especially that day, and come and join us. We have fun.
It is a truly special, used to just be an evening, now it's going to be a few special evenings, and I certainly appreciate, you know, the combined efforts, obviously you and the committee, the juniors, the DDA, or Mike, or the DDA, whatever you want to call that, but the involvement and the fact that, you know, the whole community gets involved and just makes an incredibly, incredibly special evening. So I'm certainly looking forward to it. It's one of my favorite nights of the year.
And Santa's already been contacted and up at the North Pole, and he's on, so...
He texted me, in case my kids are watching, he already texted me. You will be here.
That's right.
Behave, children.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say, I've watched this event grow over the years, and it's just incredible. You know, when I reflect back on earlier days and all that you've done and all the incredible group of volunteers that makes this happen, thank you for your hard work. And you mentioned volunteers, where do people, who do they contact if they want to volunteer?
Me? Actually, you can go to our Facebook page, which is the Berkeley Holiday Lights Parade, and definitely just get in touch that way, and we will definitely be in touch.
If they want to be like a banner carrier or anything, I'll have a sign-up genius set up.
Yep, we'll have, yeah, we always have.
Because we always need a lot of volunteers to help carry the banners.
Okay, good to know.
Especially youth groups and community service groups, we look for to volunteer.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. I know that that's something you're always certainly looking for, and anybody that wants to get to walk in the parade and just see how incredible it is down the streets, that's one great way to do it.
Thank you very much, Bridget.
You're welcome, thank you.
We would like to, I would like, since I've been here since the beginning, since the men's club turned this over to us, I want to see it grow. I want to see it get bigger. I want to see it be small, but be big, if you understand that.
Like Berkeley, yeah. We're small, but we're pretty powerful.
Absolutely, so yeah.
Well, I thank you both for being with us this evening, looking forward to that. Again, I can't believe we're already getting ready for it. It'll be here before, we know it. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 2222?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. I'll tell my dad, don't worry. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 122, matter of awarding the 2022-2023 Preventative Payment Maintenance Contract to the lowest qualified bidder, SJR Payment Repair, in the amount of $82,220, with an additional $14,222 held in reserve for contingency and engineering costs, for a total cost of $96,442.
Is there a motion to approve M 122?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgard?
Hi, Goodness Mayor, in addition to all the other work that we've been doing on the city's roads, this is an important part of our approach as well and our strategy, so we went to bid for this. This is a budgeted item that we, we have every year an allocation for, and we went to bid, and this year we ended up with SGR Payment Repair Incorporated, as the motion states. I think we've worked with them in the past.
Last three to five years.
Yeah, last three to five years. So trusted name, somebody that we've been happy with the response we've gotten from them for quite a while. This includes spray patch, overband crack fill, and asphalt mastic. And thankfully, Mr. Young is here to explain what all those things are.
Mr. Director?
Fun and exciting things. You're probably familiar with the spray patch. It's messy, it leaves a lot of gravel. Typically, you get some complaints because of the gravel, but it's really the only way to fix your small, small-depth potholes, cracks. I wish there was a better way. We're researching that with the mastic. Mastic is a hot- applied material. They did some of that, Oakland County did some of that on 12 Mile in front of the fire hall before they did a milling fill. Seen work pretty well, longevity-wise, it seems to last, I don't know if it's quite as mu, quite as long as a spray patch, but we're going to, that's on the bid, we're going to try that. Crack filling, so just your normal tire joint sealing. Then overbanding, overbanding is traditionally on asphalt, it's the wider, four-inch or so, just to feel, fill the small little cracks that are there. All of it's preventative maintenance that really needs to be done. None of it's fun or exciting, it's just kind of the cost of doing business.
Unfortunately, not everything that you and the DPW department does is overly aesthetic and always fun, but it's incredibly important, obviously, for our community, and folks probably don't even know all that you and the department do for preventive maintenance and continuing to move this city and keeping our infrastructure as strong as it can be short of being able to replace everything that we want in the city at all times. So I appreciate this coming before us. Questions for Mr. Young? Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for bringing this before us and for the work involved in getting the bids and things. First question is around timing. Do we think this will happen in this calendar year, or are we going to wait till after the spring and all that stuff?
I would love for some of it to happen this calendar year. Coolidge north of 12 Mile, I see some of those joints are starting to open up. I'd love to get those filled before winter. It's all going to be temperature-dependent. Starts getting cold, these materials, they don't respond well to cold weather.
Right.
But whatever we can hit this fall, we'll hit over the next spring and summer.
Excellent, and that leads to my second question around the general geography of where we anticipate doing this. For those that don't have access to the packet to read the more details, can you give us some highlights of where we're focusing our efforts with this item?
Mastic would be mainly Coolidge south of 12 Mile. Your joint sealing and overband would be mainly Coolidge north of 12, and like the New Harvard would be a good candidate for overbanding. It's been a few years, and it's time to overband that again. The sprays patch is most of your other side streets that are in really pretty poor condition. We've got a lot of those, unfortunately.
We sure do, so we'll be tapping into that Paser system quite a bit there, huh?
I don't think it'll change your ratings, but it'll make it a little more...
More bearable.
More tolerable for residents. It really cuts down on the cold patch in the winter, the spray patch really does. Longevity-wise, it's much better than the cold patch you traditionally see with a shovel thrown out of the back of a truck.
Right.
It's a much better fix than that.
Excellent, thank you.
Any additional questions for our director? Well, thank you, Sean, for being with us and presenting us with this this evening. Ms. Mitchell, can you see if we are going to do some maintenance on our roads, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 10122, matter of authorizing the city manager to approve the proposal from Fishbeck to provide professional services to conduct a parking study and strategic planning at a cost of $32,000, to be split evenly with the Downtown Development Authority. Funds from this expenditure will come from account 101-801-817-000.
Is there a motion to approve M 10122?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgard?
Hi, Goodness Mayor, as we discussed at a previous meeting, this is something that we've been looking at for quite a while as a potential need. The downtown master plan actually had a section of parking, had a section that included a parking study and made recommendations that we felt was outdated. It was pre-COVID and is now is several years removed from those calculations. Then it also was something that we looked at as being a good supplemental to the work that's about to begin on the city zoning code as well. So this will be helpful in two regards. Unfortunately, we were not planning for it so far back as the budgetary process, so we will be coming to council to ask for a budget amendment to fund this, but it will be both, the cost will be shared by both the planning, the, I'm sorry, the DDA as well as the city itself. So we asked that approval on it, and then Ms. Kaplansky's included in here a memo outlining the project goals. She's worked most closely with the RFP process, is most familiar with the goals of this study, as well as would be the lead individual implementing this study as well, and working directly with the contractor, should they be selected this evening.
Mr. Director, anything to add?
Just that this is most definitely a prelude to our zoning ordinance update. It's one of the categories of the zoning ordinance that is sorely in need of some updating. As part of this study, we would end up with recommendations that we would roll into the future update, but we would not necessarily update those immediately. We're happy to partner with the DDA, too, to work on parking utilization in the downtown and make sure those areas are covered as well.
Excellent. Questions for our director? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, just two comments on some things I want to, you know, make sure we pay attention to that weren't highlighted very specifically in here. Just I really want to make sure we look at the interface between commercial and residential and how to mitigate the conflicts. We've discussed in the past, there's not going to be an ideal solution, but we can look for, look for things to make it better. And then also to work with public safety and the street sign inventory they did recently, and to make sure any of the plans and items that are, you know, in this plan, you know, are compatible with what they're looking at doing as well. Thank you.
Do additional questions? I feel like if Councilmember Blanchard were still here, we'd definitely have some GIS-based conversation and questions, but we're going to just move on from that. Seeing no additional questions, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 10122?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, what is up next?
Communications, beginning with Councilmember Gavin.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Keep it brief tonight, Environmental Advisory Committee has not had a meeting since our last council meeting, so the next one will be this Thursday, the 20th, at 6:30 on the second floor of the conference room in the Public Safety Building. And then Planning Commission had a special meeting last week, which we obviously saw on our agenda tonight. The next one, meeting will be a regular meeting on October 25th at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vilani?
Nothing to update from the Technology Advisory Committee, as they have not met since our last meeting, from the Berkeley Area Chamber. The next chamber chat is coming up on October 21st at 8:30 a.m. at our public library. Join us for networking and the unveiling of the Berkeley Street Art Festival Interactive Community Art Piece by Daniel Cascato. No need to register, just show up. The Annual State of the City is coming up on October 27th at 8:00 a.m. It'll be held in person at Levels Events on Coolidge. Registration is now open for this. And if you have not already, you can go ahead and purchase your Burke Perk Discount Card. It is available on sale at Vitrine, Toadvine, Ullman's, Berkeley Medical Center Pharmacy, our city hall and library, and purchasers of this card will get access to discounts at retail and restaurants, including Woodward Corners, the Myers up there, so purchase your card now.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. Registration is open now for Craft with Sam in October, November, and December. October's craft time is this Wednesday, the 19th at 4:00 p.m. There are seven spots left. Craft times are open for those in kindergarten through fifth grade. You may register, register at recreation.berkleymish.org. Coming soon, PJs and the Polar Express, Friday, December 2nd, at the Community Center. Pizza, cookies, and hot chocolate will be provided. The cost is $5 per person, and registration will be open the first week of November. Senior trip, Van Gogh in America, that will be on November 2nd. The cost for that is $20. Also, registration's required. The senior holiday jingle and mingle will be at the Community Center on December 7th at 12:00 p.m. There is a $10 fee for that. You may register online, by phone, or in person. And Movies at the Community Center happens on November 9th at 1:00 p.m., and they'll be showing Elvis. This is free for all who attend, and there is no reservation, registration required. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me. Happy October, everybody, and let's, and here's to a great Boo-Klee Month. Yeah. Historical committee met last week's Tuesday, October 11th, and some of the many activities that are underway is the preparations of a time capsule as part of the celebration of the 100th anniversary of us, of us being a village next spring, so that'll be fun. And they're also preparing to offer for sale to residents, like little nice oval-shaped plaques that would go on your house that says, you know, "Made in," and then the year provided by the homeowner. So if your house was made in 1939 or something like that, and you want to have a little plaque to kind of display, that'll be available through the museum and the various other channels to have those made for you. So those are pretty fun. The committee continues to welcome any photographs and stories and other artifacts to contribute to our collective historical memory here, so if you have any questions or comments with those, please come to the museum. The museum is open most Wednesdays from 10:00 to 1:00, and Sundays from 2:00 until 4:00, And you can visit them online at berkeleyhistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority Board met the very next Wednesday, October 12th. Progress continues with reopening the crosswalks on Coolidge in a safe and expeditious manner. There's some interesting designs and approaches underway that we look forward to communicating and moving forward with once those are all finalized. And as noted a moment ago, the parking study is part of the broader, you know, citywide parking study is just been approved. So we'll be moving forward with that. And in the meanwhile, Boo-Hoo-Klee Month is continuing throughout this wonderful October here. First of all, thanks to everyone who came out and participated in the Witch's Night Out last week's Thursday, October 13th. It was a fantastic scary time was had by all. And that's not the end of it. We have the Boo-Hoo-Klee Ghost Chase coming up Friday, the 21st. I don't get tired of saying that.
We noticed.
Yeah, it's fun. And I hope you will, too. When you read it, you'll just hear my voice. This Friday, the 21st, from 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM. That's kind of like a scavenger hunt kind of thing throughout the downtown. It's going to be a lot of fun. There's a trick-or-treat stroll on Saturday, the 29th, from 12 noon until 3 o'clock along our downtown businesses. So wear your costumes and be prepared to be inundated by apples and lumps of coal and stuff like that. And then finally, the Monster Mash takes place that very same day, Saturday, the 29th, from 2 o'clock until 6 o'clock. We'll be closing off the north half of Coolidge from Catawba to 12 Mile. And there'll be plenty of activities and events for kids of all ages. Not everything will be tremendously frightful, so, you know, if you're a little faint of heart, you can still enjoy the festivities of such a fun event like that. And if you're interested in more information on that, visit downtownberkeley.com/boo-hoo-klee for more information. And finally, the internets are abundant with this quote. "If you think safety rules are a pain, try having an accident." So if for some strange reason anybody chooses to leave the city of Berkeley and head south on Woodward for the next couple of months, you may notice that our friends in Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale have begun a project called Woodward Moves. It's led by Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan Department of Transportation, and the Southeast Regional Council of Governments, SEMCOG. And their slogan is, "It's not a diet, it's a positive lifestyle change." And so Woodward Moves is a construction project designed to increase safety, promote inclusivity, and prosper prosperity to welcome people to enjoy and explore the Woodward Corridor for years to come. The work for Woodward Moves has started today, the 17th, and the majority of the work will be taking place next spring through fall of 2023. The project's scope includes Woodward resurfacing north of 8 Mile, targeted improvements to curbs, improved visibility at intersections, accessible curb ramps, bus islands, and drainage improvements. And that leads to safety and accessibility and economic prosperity for the businesses and for the neighbors that live in that vicinity. So we will definitely be paying attention to that project and seeing how that unfolds. As you know, we share Woodward along with many of our other neighbors. And so if this project proves to be successful, we'd certainly be interested in seeing if and how that might make sense to move up on the north side of 696. So in the meanwhile, if you are, again, if for some strange reason you need to leave the city and head down through Woodward, please note that there will be a little bit of activity and construction down there as they make some tremendous progress in helping move our region forward. And finally, just please stay safe, everybody, and hug somebody you love because they probably need it more than you think they do. So please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Price?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our library board will meet next on Wednesday, October 19th. Members will review circulation statistics, the material selection policy, and the code of conduct. Berkeley is fortunate to have such thoughtful and engaged volunteers on this and so many of our boards and commissions. And I'm very grateful for the work that they do. Also, the midterm general election is coming up on Tuesday, November 8th. Thank you to our city staff, to the poll workers, and to everyone who participates in our safe and secure election process. When more people participate, our democracy gets stronger. If you are eligible to vote, please do. Our democracy depends on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yes. The zoning board of appeals met to heard requests on one residential property to add an addition on one side. The existing property is already too close to the side property line. So the ZBA allowed that addition to occur there. However, they didn't allow an addition in the back where it's already in compliance, and they wanted to encroach to the rear lot line too closely. There were no applications for November, so they will not have a meeting next month. The tree board hasn't met since our last meeting, but they will meet Monday, October 24th at 7:00 PM in the Public Safety Conference Room. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. In addition to all the other seasons we discussed this evening, it is also curbside leaf season, which officially began today. I say curbside leaf collection purposely because all other items like sticks and twigs and any other yard debris still needs to be bagged. It can be picked up through mid-December. But as always, just place your leaves out in a nice neat line along your curb. And one of our fantastic DPW crew members will be along to pick it up. And you can check our website or your email, if you're signed up for our website, on the map and see the route that we intend to take as we go through the city here. So one of the people, I know people's one of favorite services, and it makes leaf collection so much easier than having to put it in a bag. But if you like doing that, again, we can still collect those as well through mid-December. So good things happening through our DPW as always.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, anything this evening?
Yes, I do.
I just thought you might, for some reason.
Thank you, Councilmember Price, for mentioning the election. We do have our general election coming up, November 8th. The city clerk's office will be open along with all seven of our precincts from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM on Election Day. Sample ballots are available at City Hall and at berkeleymish.org/vote. We encourage voters to familiarize themselves with the ballot. It is two-sided and a little lengthy, so doing your homework would be great before casting your absentee ballot or heading to the polls. And if anyone does want an absentee ballot, it is not too late. You can do so by calling the clerk's office, emailing us, visiting us in person. There's many ways to do so. And I'll do my plug. If anyone has our absentee ballot at home and has it completed, if you wouldn't mind dropping that off to us, that would be great. It does help out the clerk's office significantly to get the ballot as soon as possible. But of course, by law, you have until 8:00 PM on Election Day to turn that in. And we are in the process of hosting our additional election hours. The additional time that is coming up is 5:00 to 7:00 PM Thursday, October 20th. So we will be open in the evening for any election-related needs. And then 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM on Saturday, November 5th, we'll be open.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell? Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick things. First, I want to wish all of the youngsters and maybe not-so-youngsters very safe and healthy and happy Halloween. I guess healthy is probably not the right thing to say there. At any rate, I, especially the last couple of years, have been incredibly impressed by our community and just not only the decorations, which we've seen on social media, but just the sheer volume of people that are around and have lights on. And a lot of kids are certainly coming through our community and certainly enjoy that. Earlier today, at this meeting, my father was referenced, the self-professed king of Berkeley. But I'm going to shift and talk about the queen instead, my mother. I have long sought to solidify my role as favorite child. And if moving across the street wasn't enough and having a bunch of granddaughters, this should help. I'm going to take this opportunity on this very special day to wish my mom a happy birthday today. It is her birthday. And I ask you, Mom, how many of your other children on live TV in front of hundreds in attendance, thousands, billions watching at home across the world, took the opportunity to tell you happy birthday? It is actually today, so in all seriousness, happy birthday, Mom, and all of my siblings that aren't watching. Sorry, suckers. You lose. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem with support from Councilmember Vilani. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes. The October 17th, my mom's birthday, 2022, meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.